Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the September 17th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. If you please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, I thank you so much for this great community, the gathering of the leaders here this evening, and the immense amount of work that we have to do as a council is, at times, it seems never-ending and always very complex. And we just ask for your wisdom as we go through these challenging times and we go through these challenging issues for Steve Camby. I ask that you continue to grace our community with the loving protection that you grant it. So, I pray for our greater community here in Oregon and in the United States as we try to figure out how to come together on our differences. You know the way, Lord, and all I can do is rely on you. Please protect our men and women in service here and abroad, and please look after and bring our first responders home safely every night. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a live one tonight, huh? All right. Mr. City Administrator, do we have any new employee introductions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do not this evening.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is a proclamation for POW MIA Recognition Day, whereas the United States of America has participated in many wars calling upon its sons and daughters to fight for their country, whereas American men and women have been held captive for hostile powers during their military service, and whereas many American prisoners of war were subjected to harsh and inhumane treatment by their captors, which often resulted in death, whereas Americans are still listed as missing and unaccounted for, and the families and friends of these missing Americans, as well as their fellow veterans, still endure uncertainty concerning their fate, whereas the sacrifices of Americans still missing are deserving of national recognition and support for continuing priority efforts to determine their fate, and whereas the City of Camby is proud to join with other cities in the state of Oregon and the nation in honoring those still missing. Now therefore, I, Brian Hotson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Camby, hereby proclaim September 19th, 2025, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Camby, and encourage all citizens to join in this observance, given unto my hand the 17th day of September 2025. And I think...
Thank you.
You know how much I love to do this.
I know you do.
I just want to say on the behalf of the VFW and the VFW Accelerate, we really appreciate everything you guys do for us, and we hope that we can keep on doing this for many, many years to go. And Irene gave me some stuff to hand out to you guys, so can I?
Absolutely.
Because if I don't, Irene will be mad.
We know how passionate Irene can be. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. I'll get you later. I'm special now?
That's for you.
Oh, I do?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
There you go, guys. And like I said before, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda this evening is opportunity for citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items not on the agenda. If you are in, let's see, attending in person, please fill out one of these yellow cards, which is located back on the podium by the entrance to the council chambers. You'll fill it out and bring it to Teresa, our deputy city recorder. She'll make sure that I get it. If you are not able to attend, you can register early to speak online. You just need to reach out to City Hall by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings. Like I said, there's an opportunity to address non-agenda items, and each person is given three minutes to address the council. There may not be a decision made at the time of the meeting, but there will definitely be staff time or a meeting with myself and staff in the future for potential resolution or items in the future. I have several cards. The first one I have is Kimberly Bromwell regarding SDCs. Hi. If you'd be sure to, whoever's speaking or when you take terms, please just make sure to speak into the microphone so it can be picked up here in the auditorium and at home.
All right.
Is that all right if we give you guys some of these documents?
Absolutely. If you want to hand them to our deputy city recorder, she'll pass them down and make sure that they're put in the record.
All righty. Well, hi. I'm Kimberly Bromwell. This is my mother Patty and my project manager, Devin. And I am here because we currently have moved to Camby, and we purchased a property that had an existing house and a 1928 farmhouse. And the farmhouse was out of commission, and the laws have changed. And I had contacted the City of Camby and found out from Laney that it can be restored. And so we have that information, and so we are trying to get the utilities reconnected. So, we already have water, electric, and we are looking at the sewer system. So, I'm here to ask for a reduction or waiver in the sewer system development charges. I am wanting to live on the same property as my family, so as my mom ages that I can be right next door to her and we can help each other out. The farmhouse was an existing structure. Then my mom's farmhouse was put on there and is connected to sewer. And so alls I want to do is connect the farmhouse to this existing sewer. And I'm already living on the property with my family. I'm living in her guest suite. All my stuff is in her garage. And I'm wanting to just, you know, renovate this so I can move into it. So there will be no, like, increase in, like, amount of usage that we have going in or out. And I just didn't understand, I guess, when we went to the City of Camby and we turned in our applications or permits, that there was a fee schedule that was over $10,000 that I wasn't aware of ahead of time after talking to Laney and also talking to Joey at the utility company. So I was surprised that of that number, it wasn't included in my bid with my contractor. And I'm just asking if you guys might respectfully look at all of our documents and either waive or reduce the SDCs since we, hopefully, our property already paid those SDCs when it was hooked up to my mom's house originally.
Okay.
And, yeah, I'm a healthcare professional. We just moved. My mom's retired. Her husband's going to retire soon. And we're just trying to make a structure on our property better and be close to one another, so.
Okay.
One of the big things that I want to make sure we adding is, they're just really trying to have an age-in-place thing, situation here for her mother. We had put together everything, done as much due diligence as we could to really investigate the cost and fees. She's pulling everything she can together to be close to her mom as in that aging-in-place. She's currently already living there, so there is no more usage added to anything here. Or just, you can see the site map there, that it just says that we're connecting to the existing lines that were already updated, like, when they added that other building. So at this point, we're really not adding anything extra besides remodeling the square footage that was already existing on the property. We're just, at this moment, kind of sitting in a place where it's going to make it so she's not able to do those type of things, and to be able to create the autonomy for her mother to still have a space, but also be close to her as she's a healthcare professional. So, you know, being in that aging-in-place situation next to your mom, it seems ideal for her. It's just, it's definitely at a stop point for us if that's the case, and really just asking for a good review of what we're looking at.
And I have a single income also, so, and this project is all on me, and I am scraping together every penny I have to be there so I can be next to my mother and my father-in-law, so.
Okay. No, I appreciate that and totally understand the need for cohabitating with aging-in-place and things like that and being a support system for sure. So, have you had a chance to talk with the planning department beyond this?
Absolutely. We talked to the planning department director, and he said that the only way that we could go ahead and get this waived or significantly reduced would be to come to you guys and sit in front of you and have this conversation. He is not capable of making such, I mean, $11,000 is a lot to the property. It's like, the physical structure that we're remodeling is barely worth that itself. So add another $11,000, just connect to the existing sewer lines that have been updated already when they put the other stuff on the property. And there's no actual more usage because she's already currently living there. There's not going to be any more actual usage to the sewer lines or anything, and everything's already updated other than that, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming and making the ask. We're in a tough situation in that generally during this time of the meeting, it's not a decision-making time for us. We would have to go through, just making sure staff does their homework and comes back and presents to us kind of their findings, history. In my history out here, I don't think we've ever done such a reduction or waiving for a property. Doesn't mean it can't be done or that the council wouldn't want to do it. So, I'm going to ask that, you know, Randy and Dawn maybe get together and we do some homework on this, and we can look at getting this on an agenda as a conversation piece for us to have. It sounds like you're in a relative time crunch, or if it's a decision that, you know, it sounds like it is going to be something that is going to come to us, so we will try to expedite as quickly as we can.
Okay. Yeah, because we were told to submit permits and submit our application, and we did that. And so our permits application is in at Clackamas County also, which they are five to six weeks out, however. So, but, yeah, I mean...
We will try not to delay by five to six weeks. We'll definitely get your answer.
Okay.
We'll try to be faster than the county.
And I'm happy to share all correspondence with Laney, emails that we did before, during, and after we bought this property. And I just, my conversation with Joe at the utility company was just like, do we have to tear down our driveway to get to this hooked up to sewer? He said, no, we could hook it up to your mom's. There was no talk about a cost or anything like that. So that was just a conversation.
Okay. Counselor Modano, question?
Quick question. The distance between the existing structure that you're proposing here to the city sewer line, what's the distance that you're wanting to add line there?
So, our plumber is going to go right to their line, and it's probably about 15 feet.
So 15 feet from the city sewer line to where you're hooking to the structure?
We're connecting to, technically, it's the, so it's on, it's a flag lot. So it's at the end of another house right here, too. And then there's their garage. And their house, the proposed structure is right here. The house that her mom lives in and she is staying in is right there. And then there's another full residence right here with like a 472-foot driveway.
On your diagram here, it's from the city line to where you're proposing to hook up?
Yeah.
What's, how much, what's your linear footage there?
About 30 feet.
30?
That the plumber is going to connect to, yeah.
So that would be an additional 30 feet of sewer line that would need to be added, piggyback to the city line?
Yeah, that, it's just tying in with the one, the one fork we have there.
Okay.
It's, it's definitely not covered by the city in any cause. There's no cost accrued by the city to do any of that. It's just our plumbing to connect to that, so.
Counselor Brady?
Yes, just for clarification, I just want to make sure, because I was trying to read this as well as listening. You're talking about $11,000. I think you're referring to the entire, on this bill that you presented to us, it says $10,375. That's the total that you're referring to, correct?
That's an estimate, yeah.
That's an estimate, okay. And I think, just, just for my understanding, it's not just, it's not just for sewer. There's like stormwater, wastewater, parks, SDC, transportation. There's a number of line items on here that total up to this total $10,000. It's not one thing.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess for me, I am, I am more than happy to hear what sort of solutions we can offer to these folks. I would say that I would be most comfortable having this first looked at by the planning department and the folks there to make sure that we are not setting some sort of precedent that we don't want to set elsewhere for others that I don't want to say might not be as deserving. I don't want to create a loophole that others can then jump through that are, that are not in your same situation, if you understand where I'm going with that.
Yes.
Because one of the things that we've had talks about is our SDCs tend to be quite low compared to other municipalities, and it has allowed developers to come into our community and essentially take advantage of that. And so I don't want, I don't want others to, I don't want to create any more loopholes than what they've already got by trying to help you folks out.
I understand.
So, yeah, getting something back from planning, and then also just maybe making sure, I don't know how this ties into a planning or Plan Commission meeting, but just make sure that the Planning Commission is aware of what we're doing up here, because technically this is a land use thing. And I don't want to make, I don't want to be asserting anything by us doing this and not also having the Planning Commission know about kind of what we're doing up here.
Well, and I think if it goes back to staff, and they'll determine whether or not if it's more informative to Planning Commission or if it actually needs to go to them, which I don't think it does, but that's why we have smart people that make, help us with these things.
Make great decisions.
Sounds good.
Does that work for you, Randy and Don?
Thanks.
Great. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor Sterns.
The question I have is, I was looking for this, and the reason why you're asking for the reduction in fees, is it because without the reduction of fees, you wouldn't be able to proceed with the project?
Correct.
Is it like a deal breaker, or you're just saying that anybody in a similar situation that was rebuilding should not have to pay SDCs because they're rebuilding on an existing, remodeling existing structure? I just wanted to make it clear the reason. You're asking because you don't, can't come up with the money or be difficult to?
Correct. Yes. I mean, I have pulled from my maximum amount of my 401K, my savings, and applied for a few credit cards just to pay for the renovation that I'm going to hopefully get, but was not expecting this cost. In fact, he's worked tirelessly trying to get bid after bid after bid to fit into my budget. And money's going to be pretty tight after I get my house, but I feel like it's worth it to live right next door to my, my mother and be there for her. And frankly, she's there for me, too, so.
Okay. I have some ideas, but I think it's probably best postponed for the full discussion on it.
Wait, so it's an agenda item for us to discuss it?
Do you mind if I say one last thing?
No, we're right ahead, sir.
This is not about financial gain for these people whatsoever. It is not about loopholes, or they're just trying to be close to each other and do the best they can to do that.
And fight for all the rules.
That's why I work so hard to make sure that it fits our budget. You know, we usually be like, okay, we don't want to take the project if it's, you know, not in a certain, you know, that's, as a business, that's the way we work. I'm just a project manager for my company as well, too. I'm not the owner. I don't have to be here today. I'm here because I want to support her, and I see, I see it's important for her to be close to her family, and that's why, you know, I'm fighting for her as well, too, so.
Great.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. And please, Dawn and Mr. Hardy and Mr. Ely will be in touch with you guys. In fact, this is, there you go.
Appreciate it.
So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much for listening. We'll look forward to hearing from you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thanks.
You don't need us to stick around.
Nope, not unless you want to hang out and...
Okay. Well, I wanted to get involved in my community, but I didn't realize it was going to be at this.
No, hey. Sometimes that's how it starts.
Hopefully, I'll see you out in the community.
Yes, for sure. Yes. Yes, for sure. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Uh, next yellow card I have is uh, Mr. Perman, parking public.
Hi.
Hello, sir.
Uh, Don Perman, president of Redwood Village. We've had some discussion about what to do about lack of public parking in the village and all the private parking lots that continue to be used for access to the logging road on the south side of town. That issue has not been solved and I sent documents to Randy. This issue came up twelve years ago and you decided not to help with it. I brought up another eight years ago. It got pushed aside. Four years ago, new council didn't want to deal with it. And now two weeks ago, not on the agenda, all I saw was a letter from Parks and Recs, but nothing about discussing the agenda that was on that issue and no invitation to discuss it on the agenda. So I never saw anything on the schedule two weeks ago that there was going to be any further discussion after you got the letter from Parks and Recs. Parks and Recs main issue is they don't want to buy the road either. I understand that. They shouldn't. It's a city issue. But parking, they're still interested in lot number five as a possibility to resolve that issue about no public parking on the south side of town to access the logging road. I keep sending pics, moms and their kids parked in our cul-de-sacs. I keep this information. I've got more videos. If you want to see it all, I'll, I'll share it. But that's the issue is lack of public parking. And we've talked about other places on the south side. There's no other access but Third Court. When I developed Third Court, the plat has no easement to the logging road. That easement was a city demand, that big wide veh- vehicle easement that connects the logging road to the cul-de-sac. That was a request by the city. My plans passed by the county, the CCNRs, bylaws, all that development for this development had nothing to do with this huge easement onto the logging road from the cul-de-sac. So I think the parking committee really is interested in lot number five because I talked with them. So I'm going to give you my latest proposal tonight and I hope we can open the discussion back up and realize that big huge easement that the city made me do has been the city's device in use of Third Court for the last eighteen years. So the proposal, if you can give me one more minute, please.
Uh, we have a very tight agenda tonight, Dawn, so I need you to pass your information to the deputy city reporter.
It's all in documents here.
And, and I will say that it was on the agenda two weeks ago. We did talk about the Parks letter and my understanding from the Parks conversation, it wasn't just about not buying the road. It was not having an interest in buying the lot to create a parking lot.
And that's what's in my letter here.
Then you can give that to Teresa and we will get a copy of it. We're not going to discuss it tonight again.
That's great.
So that's, so that's point number two is yes, it was on the agenda. To the Parks group uh, is not interested. And then we as a council deliberated very long, much longer than I anticipated uh, on this issue of moving forward. I am speaking, let me finish, please. Um, and the council came to a consensus that we are not wanting to move forward any longer with this conversation. So unfortunately, I would say if you, as you painted your, your time visiting the council, whenever there's a council change, I think you're going to have to wait again until there's a council change because this particular council is not interested in having a conversation any longer about the road or the parkings, buying a lot for parking uh, in that development. Yes, we agree that there's a parking issue on the south side of town. We just don't know if that is the solution and right now we're not interested in looking at that as a possible solution. So if you want to give those to Teresa, we, she'll just make sure we get it. Okay?
It's all about the Park Committee's five-year plan.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
We met that issue.
Thank you.
We solved that issue for the Park Committee.
Okay.
That's all, that's a whole stipulation was the Park Committee's inability to fund it in the next five years.
And we will look at it.
We will be able to read that when we get it.
And we resolved that with this.
Okay.
Very gracious for the visiting, or the village people that have been here so many years.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it, Dawn.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, my next yellow card is uh, Michelle Bailey with, regarding e-bikes and e-scooters. Good evening.
Hello.
How are you?
Uh, I'm good.
Good.
I actually do sit on the Bike Ped Committee, but I'm not here in that capacity, kind of. Anyways, I was tasked to write a little bit about e-bikes uh, for the trail. And so I went to our city website and there's nothing. There's no information. It's like Canby doesn't have an opinion about e-bikes and e-scooters. So I work in West Lynn. I just quickly pulled them up and boom, I get a definition of what they are. I get basic rules. I get the Oregon DMV, um, a little quiz. So um, I would like to write the little blurbs for the Facebook page, but we have nothing on our Canby website regarding our opinion about e-bikes or e-scooters. And I know um, they're not going to go away. There're going to be more. They even had a little thing in their tidings, which we have the Canby Herald, right when school started, talking again about e-bikes and e-scooters. So I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention that there is nothing on our website. And as a citizen of Canby, it would be good to know if I decide to buy an e-bike or e-scooter, what can I or can I not do? And, you know, they're sharing the paths and the roads with walkers and other bicyclists, so. I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention. I'll get this to.
Um, thank you for doing that. I know that uh, in the mere recent past, there's been conversation about e-bikes and the e-scooters, especially on the logging trail.
Yeah. And I know we're not going to get, there's not money for the striping right now, but at least I think we need to educate our public. And so there's no way to educate them if they go to a site and they can't find information.
Who's our liaison to the Bike and Ped?
Oh, sorry, Counselor.
You are? Okay.
Um, this happened to come up under the, the police department when it came up.
Sure.
On the West Lynn site because it is um, subject to traffic rules.
Uh, maybe it'd be a good agenda item or conversation topic for the Bike and Ped group to discuss and kind of maybe hammer out some, you know, either something similar that would pertain to Canby and then we could take a look at that later at a later date as a council and hear what you, what that committee has to say on it. I think that'd be a worthwhile.
Yeah, I just, it was.
Committee has put, they actually sent letters in the, in assisting or encouraging the redefinition for the, or the, or the Parks Department.
On clarifying the levels in e-scooters and e-bikes and so forth. And they put quite a bit of work into that. And so I know they probably, and they've talked to the uh, uh, Parks Committee and, and Public Works about some safety things and some striping and maybe some rearranging some arrows going one way or the other to uh, to help with some safety in that as well.
So we already have some work that's been going on.
There's not even any general information on our city website.
But they, they can probably put together some information to provide.
There might be something from a communications.
And I don't mind writing, you know, my little blurbs using West Lynn's information, but I thought I'd just bring it to the council.
Sometimes we just need to tweak the wheel, not reinvent the wheel.
There you go.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. I am out of yellow cards, so we will move into the consent agenda this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the consent.
I moved to approve the consent agenda that includes the approval of the August twentieth, twenty-twenty-five City Council regular meeting minutes.
Except. Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Waterman to approve the consent agenda, which is, just includes the minutes of the August twentieth, two thousand twenty-five City Council regular minutes, meeting minutes, excuse me. Any further comment, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That passes six-zero. Uh, next on our agenda this evening is a presentation with Portland General Electric, Bonneville Power Association and Canby Utility. We have a whole cadre of people. Hello. Good evening.
We might need more chairs for today.
Let you guys get settled. I'm going to have Randy maybe kick this off here and whatnot. Um, all I ask is, and I've got a request from our um, AV team of Gordon to, as you guys are talking or taking turns, if we feel pleased, slide the mic so that, perfect. So thank you for that and thank you for being here. This, as you know, is a pretty heavy topic for us here in Canby these days. So Randy, I'll let you dial us in.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Council, Randy Ely, interim city administrator. Um, I think it was about twelve weeks ago when I first had coffee with Jason, Mr. Burning, um, talking about some of these energy constraints. And it seems like we've come a long way. Um, since then, the Sydney Council and the Canby Utility Board, you, you all have met, talking about this, becoming well-versed on the constraints, um, and some of the challenges that are out there. Since then, PGE came out and met with Dawn and his staff. Um, they're PG's economic and government relations teams, talking about our growth. Okay, so there's been good collaboration and coordination going on there. Um, I know a lot of folks um, in the area have been involved, including um, our representative, Drayson from the area, um, the city, the Canby Utility, um, PGE, BPA, et cetera. And, and we noticed in June, of course, one of the things that was first noticed was the Canby Utility notice regarding power service constraints on their website. Okay, that was in June. And so we had a good conversation about that. And then if you fast forward to August, and these are in front of you, August, we sent our notice to DLCD saying that we were considering the adoption of a moratorium of, of, on our development and on construction of land use applications. So, and that considering is a very strong adjective in this, in this case. So I think we're at a perfect time tonight to think about, now that we've level set on where we've been and some of the constraint challenges that we're facing, especially maybe one megawatt and above, to have a conversation about where we're going to go, how we're going to work our way collectively out of this. So it's a great opportunity tonight to have Mr. Beckettall, Senior Vice President, Advanced Energy Delivery from Portland General Electric. Um, you have their bios in front of you. Jason Burning, um, Operation Manager, Canby Utility. And Mike Miller, Bonneville Power, Acting Senior Vice President of Transmission Services. So, um, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to add any additional framing, that's uh, that's the setup, so.
I would. Thank you very much, um, Randy for doing that. Uh, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. As uh, Mr. Ely has said, and I know that you guys are very uh, versed in what's going on. Um, there's been a lot for us as a city. Um, and I do want to say thank you for the hard work that everybody pulled together, at least because we had some, we had some big projects that were on the verge of not coming to fruition and obviously it was creating some consternation here for us. And so we wanted to share that with you all. Um, and I think you all have responded very well to address the pieces with Wilson Construction and OLCC and, and Trammell Crowe and uh, our event center. And I think we still have a business in, in BCC Steel, um, BCC.
BBC.
BBC, thank you. Jeez Louise. In BBC Steel, that's a project that, you know, we are still waiting on, hopefully getting that rectified so that they can continue with their project. So my goal um, tonight is to really kind of hear um, some background. Again, we've heard a lot in terms of how these projects tend to marinate for a while and these are looked at and prepared for. Kind of want to try to get an understanding of, was there a miss? And if so, how do we correct it and how do we prevent this in the future, for sure? Um, you know, Canby's prepared, we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan development, which is going to mean more growth. Um, and a big section of that is our industrial park that's going to grow and that's going to be more power demands in that regards. And then we have uh, a water treatment facility that we're, um, and I'm going to look at Chairwoman Thompson, we're eight, what, eight years, seven years from needing to have that completed? Melody?
My understanding is five.
Five? Five years. So again, another huge power draw um, that takes priority and precedence over everything else. So, um, I'm, I don't think the council is here to like, turn it into um, you know, rattling, uh, rattling of sabers. We want to get some, some direction and idea from where we can go to be productive and hopefully on a course to get this in a spot where we can continue to develop and grow and attract businesses to Canby. So, that's where I'm at. Gentlemen, I will leave it to you.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor Hudson. Um, and council members, uh, Mr. Administrator, good to see you again. Um, it seemed like we just had a retirement for you.
I'm hearing that a lot lately.
Yeah. My name is Larry Beckettall and as Randy indicated, Senior Vice President for Advanced Energy Delivery. Um, kind of the, the guy that's been around a while. Um, it's the way I would say that that job title fits. Um, we have a lot of changes going on in the industry. Uh, by way of background, I started with Pacific Core, um, and went to Clark Public Utilities, then went to Bonneville and had uh, my accompanying partner here, his job, uh, before joining Portland General Electric eleven years ago. So, a little over forty-two years in the industry. Um, but it makes me a little unique in the sense that I have worked all kinds of utilities, public utilities, uh, private utilities and for federal. And trying to understand how do the pieces come together? And so that's what we want to share with you this evening is, um, you know, how do these parts and pieces all fit together? The roles and responsibilities of each party and, you know, how do we get to, as you're pointing out, plans, long-term plans? It is expensive, infrastructure, much like you understand with water, sewer, electricity, many of the same ways. Um, and when you're needing to build out, it, it takes both time and effort and designs, expertise to come in, step in and help fill that gap. So what do we need to, to plan for? If we, um, if we can flip to the next slide. Um, oh, we got a clicker here. Okay. Let's try this. All right, great. Um, what I would like to point out, uh, the three entities. So, um, Mike Miller being here from Bonneville Power, uh, you are all very familiar with hydro facilities on the Columbia River. Transmission from those hydro facilities into Portland, um, that was all built back in, you know, the New Deal era, the thirties when the dams were built and the forties, World War II broke out, aluminum industry came in. That's when the transmission lines were built for the most part. So what we live with in the transmission world today, for the most part, was built in the, and finished by the seventies. Aluminum industry left, chip industry came in and we as society have been slowly growing. Um, and, and for decades, we were growing less than one percent a year. Currently, Portland General is growing at three percent a year. And you're going to see that same number for the Northwest in general. And I'll share with you that Canby has been growing five percent a year for the last five years. So growth matters. And, and you're thinking about planning. We got to think about, you know, what is that involved? So from those transmission lines, you see kind of the red dash lines of BPA. Um, between that and Jason here and with the Canby Utility is transmission lines that PGE owns. And so the energy flowing from Bonneville comes across PGE transmission lines and then feeds into Canby. There's a little bit of, of BPA co-ownership with uh, uh, PGE coming into the Canby substation on the west side of, of Canby. But I'll just say that for the most part, it's coming through, the energy being produced. You are a full requirements customer of Bonneville Power. That means the energy is coming to you via transmission from Bonneville. Then it flows over PGE's lines into the distribution facilities that you own as a utility here in the city of Canby. So I just kind of want to lay that out. And the roles and responsibilities as Canby as a municipality, uh, you know, to plan for and build the distribution system, you can choose, do you want to get involved in transmission? Do you want to build transmission? in transmission? Do you wanna build transmission? That's an up-level. It's a lot of effort, but, but I would just share, that's an opportunity. Do you want, you know, PGE, as we talk about plans, do you want PGE to build? Your normal process is to request BPA, that you wanna upsize. And then from that upsize, the three parties here sitting at the table have to get together and decide what's the best way to achieve that. So, when the request came in originally, um, and, and I think brought a lot of consternation about, well, what is it gonna take? Well, I mentioned to you about the growth, and, uh, we'll jump to the next slide here. Partnership being really key, but, but you've doubled in size since 1990. And that's a good thing. You know, I, I think all of us recognize that. But how much has changed in terms of the transmission? There hasn't been any change. And, and so now, we, we start to talk about, okay, I mentioned to you, you've been growing at 5%, 25% over the last five years. You've gone from 34 megawatts to 42 megawatts. Now, what does that mean? What's a, what's a megawatt? I'll just say in terms of homes, that's about 300 to 350 homes being built. That would be 1 megawatt. So, you can put that into kinda sizing to get to that 42 megawatts. We also, uh, that's on the, you know, the transmission in total. So I put a little bubble around Canby, you know, that's the, the amount that you're using today. Round, surrounding and, and use of our distribution substation, we serve customers just outside of Canby, there's about another 18 megawatts. The combination of the two, 60 megawatts is what the transmission capacity or transmission is, is serving the area right now. The request came in for the three developments, that's 6 megawatts. So, another 14% on top of your 42 megawatts being added to the system. And so, when it was first looked at, the thought was, boy, um, how, how do we do this? Can the distribution handle it? Does it have to be on the transmission? And I'll just give a shout out to one of our engineers, Jennifer Galloway, who looked at it and said, hey, I think, working with Jason, we can come up with a way that the, we can do it in the distribution. We can squeeze out the 6 megawatts. Otherwise, we're gonna have to work on the transmission side. So, the transmission capacity for that 6 megawatts were good today. But if you continue to grow at 5% a year, don't have the transmission. If you add another 6 megawatts or a 10-megawatt load, we don't have the transmission. So, between Bonneville and PGE and Canby Utilities, we've gotta solve that issue. We put a proposal on the table that was kind of the first suggestion, was $45 million on the transmission to be upgraded. Now, if I slipped over to the Bonneville side and we went out to the 500 KV line that's, that's running east, or north, south out here, and you wanted to put a substation out there, eh, what's a 500 KV sub-run?
Add a zero to that.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we're in, we're in the $400 million range if you're trying to put a substation of that nature in. That's what it takes if you're going to add 3, 400 megawatts, 500 megawatts, that sort of thing. But you're not. So we have to think about, what can we do? And, and what I would suggest is that we've found a solution for these three developments to move forward. We need to find the next levels of solutions. And, and so Jason has put in a request to Bonneville, and now we are beginning to look at that in addition to what you currently have, adding the new 6 megawatts of load. So, I, I, I share that to say, it takes one planning, is critical for all of us. What is that future? As you mentioned, the water system. We need to know that now. If you wanna get ahead of that five years, transformers, if you're going to order, are something on the order of about three to four years right now, in, in large substation transformers, to purchase them, because of the high demands that are out there right now. So we've gotta get ahead of this. We've gotta start thinking quickly on our feet. How do we help you, you know, advance as you go forward? So, let me stop there. I'm gonna turn it over to, to Jason and, uh, Mike to, to pitch in here, and then we can open up for questions.
Thanks, Larry. Um, so, you know, moving on to what our short-term plans are, as we all know, um, we were able to come up with a solution to bring the 6 megawatts into the city. Um, you know, that's gonna be spread over the course of a few years before the, that, um, that load will be fully needed. Um, we did read, we did, um, give will-serv letters to those three projects that we all have, uh, spoke about. And, um, we just completed our impact study with PGE, um, which, which basically was to figure out how we were going to, um, bring this 6 megawatts onto our system. And the way it's gonna be, um, done is, there's two megawatts that will be able to be brought on to the Westcott Substation. And then we're gonna actually have to switch a distribution system feeder over to our Knightsbridge Sub, which is more of a manual, um, run transmission system. That's what will create the extra four megawatts totaling the six megawatts to be able to bring on. We still haven't had the conversation, and, and as Larry mentioned earlier, Jennifer Galloway is who I've been dealing with, um, through these, this process. Her and I will be sitting down and, and coming up with a timeline of when these, these loads will be needing to be, um, brought online, and when we'll have to be shifting our distribution system around. Thank you. And then moving on to some of the long-term planning, um, like Larry mentioned earlier, we did submit a line load request to Bonneville. Um, I did just receive actually today, the first of, um, many meetings that will take place. I received a request today for the first part of October to kinda kick off this line and load study. And, um, I believe it'll be a study that will take us probably closer to the end of spring, maybe early summer, um, to complete this study. And that'll give us some clarity on, on a direction that we could go, be indirect fed from BPA. Um, another long-term, um, strategy here for us is that we need to, um, partner with the city planning department and really get a good view of what is coming down the line as far as, um, expansions of the UGB, what types of, of, um, construction will be constructed in those UGB areas that are be expanded out, you know, and in timeframe of those, um, those expansions. Just so we can get a good planning, um, perspective for moving forward on, on trying to figure out what our next, next moves will be as far as, um, making sure we can hit the mark the next time, um, so we don't end up in a situation like we have now.
All right, great. Thanks, uh, and thanks for the time here. Uh, that, that all starts with the line and load request, uh, what was mentioned. And I think that's gonna really get us to a spot where we know how best to handle the growth, how much growth we're talking about. Uh, I'll just say from a broader perspective, everyone is in this state right now. So Canby's not alone. Uh, and I think it's, it's good that we've kinda solved the short-term problems that we're working with and that we're talking right now about the longer-term problems because it is, uh, the growth is pretty massive just in the Northwest alone. Uh, and as we look at it from a Bonneville standpoint and our 15,000 line miles of transmission, uh, every place is like this, right? And so, and so even Canby, being one of the smaller communities, uh, the growth is pretty exceptional. Uh, and, and as we see that, I don't see it changing. So, uh, so getting in on this line and load request is the right way. Looking at whether, uh, direct service is the way to go forward, we'll get that out of the study that comes out, uh, which will be about six months, uh, to get ourselves there in conversations with Canby Utilities. So that, that will make a big difference. But when you, when you zoom out a little bit, uh, in the Northwest altogether, and you look at the growth with data centers that we all see popping up everywhere, and AI driving a lot of that growth, and we see those, those issues with the power side as well as the water sides. Uh, so it's, it's all that planning part that we have to get in front of. And I think that's, that's why where we are is the right place to be. Uh, and, and that line and load request is gonna get us to the next spot. Just a couple of notes about Bonneville altogether. We're, because of the massive demand we have right now, uh, we're changing a lot of our processes, trying to accelerate how quickly we can be responsive to communities like Canby. Uh, and we have a, a program called Grid Access Transformation, which is gonna move us to a, a place where we can be more responsive to these kinda requests. And it will hopefully, uh, really drive us to the place where we need to be. We, we have, um, projects right now that we call evolving grid projects, which are, it's, it's a massive undertaking, but it, it's, uh, $5 billion worth of projects, 23 different projects around the Northwest. Uh, and it really gets us to a spot where we start to be proactive in our planning. Uh, Bonneville's been under a, a wave of moving forward because of small amounts of growth where we wait for the requests to come in, you know? And, and as you can see, it takes a long time to build infrastructure. So if you have to wait, Bonneville's really moving to this proactive planning model. Uh, and, and having the engagements like this with the line and load requests help drive the builds that we'll make so that we're ready for you, uh, as you get ready for your growth. So, so you'll see that coming up more and more often as we talk about that. And we'll be interacting with Jason and, and the Canby folks as we move forward. Uh, and you'll see how those builds can hopefully, uh, drive that change in the timeline we need. Uh, utility work is taking forever at this point. And like Larry, I've been at Bonneville for 33 years. So, uh, it's, I, you know, I've seen the amount of time it takes to just order equipment all by itself. So, so I think the collaboration we're gonna do moving forward, having that line and load request get the answers we need and drive where builds might need to happen, maybe further strengthening the connection with PGE, however we decide to move forward. Uh, overall, it's just partnership. Uh, I think this is a good place to start. And I think we'll hopefully have good, uh, meetings going forward where we can kinda check in periodically and see how we're doing, see what growth you're seeing. That's really, really helpful for us to see that and Larry to see that, uh, as we go forward. So, that's it from me. Thanks.
So, something that's, that I just really wanna point out, um, it's very unique to, I think, have all three partners here. Um, as we know, you know, our obligation is with BPA, through BPA. And, you know, to have PGE here at the table and to be able to have access to, to, um, some of the engineering staff that, you know, normally we wouldn't have available, I think that kinda shows that there is a commitment here from all three parties to solve this solution. So I just, I just wanted to point that out.
So maybe, uh, Mayor Hudson, we can, uh, open it up for questions?
Absolutely. Counselor Sterns?
I have a few questions that I'm curious about. Um, we say right now we're about 42, and then you just added six, so that makes 48 if I do the math right. Um, what is the capacity right now? 50, 52? What's, what's the, uh, at what point, do we exceed capacity?
So, that's kinda why I point out the transmission side. So, um, the 48 that you have, the 18 that PGE has, and if we looked at the transmission, um, we have roughly 66. We were right on that edge of what the transmission can handle as it is today.
So the transmit, the transmission is gonna be like 70 or 68 or something like that, or is that?
It, it's really close to 68, something close to that.
Okay, so we're pretty much.
You're, you're very close.
Couple of projects away from exceeding the capacity, correct?
Correct.
From what you're saying. I just understand, understand that. Um, when we talk about this, um, 66 megawatts, um, is that like, um, a peak load that you're talking about? Or is that average load, or?
Yes, yes. So that is peak load. So, to your point, not all hours, coincidental, you know, you, we'd have to look at an hourly study to say, you know, how often do we have risk here?
Uh, so, I mean, it's, it's, cause that just brings a couple of things to my mind, which of course you probably already thought about, but the idea of one, maybe charging, um, um, by what time of day, at time of day charging, or also, um, some of the bigger projects, maybe having generators that could kick on, um, to handle peak times, because we're talking just the, the peak load, right?
Correct, yeah. No, absolutely. Uh, you, counselor, you're spot on at thinking, that's why we've been adding batteries and thinking about how do we adjust these constraints? Because transmission is hard to build. So, uh, and it takes time to, to make those things happen. In this case, uh, there's probably some good opportunities, um, with existing transmission lines to reconductor, upgrade the voltage on them, do some of those things. But you're gonna have to convert substations while you do that. So, so, wanna put all the options on the table. But to your point, you can put batteries in, that helps some of the constraints during the short term, too.
Okay, and then the other thing, um, just as a curiosity, thinking, you mentioned price tag, 45 million to upgrade the line. Is that upgrade gonna like double the capacity? Give it a half African? Can it take 70 to 100, 70 to 80? What, what's, what is that?
I, I wish I could say that it would. Um, this was just, the initial study was for seven and a half megawatts to be added. And that was the transmission needed to.
That would be 45 million to go to.
45 million, yeah.
To just seven megawatts more.
At that point. So, I can't, I can't tell you, there's a, can you stretch a little bit more? And I can't, but, but that's just, that was a basic.
Cause I imagine you're upgrading the, uh, transmission towers, right? This is, it'll have to be eventually happen, right?
Right. That and in the substations, the transformers that convert, you know, the high voltage, the low voltage, you're gonna have to convert those as well.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Good question, by the way.
Counselor Armin? Yeah. So, kinda giving you some clarification back to, sort of like what Counselor Sterns was saying. So if we didn't have any more, any, say we zero industrial growth, we're just looking at houses. We're, and we're averaging about three, we're averaging about 300 homes, I think, a year, based on the reports that we saw and the, the staff reports. So we're, if just our normal residential growth, we're maxing out in a couple of years?
Yeah, I mean, at a, at a 200 house per year clip.
That's, so a megawatt a year? So, in seven years, we would max out that 40, 45 million dollars, you just put the add-on, just in houses.
Hmm. No, it, it's a great comment, uh, counselor, that, um, that's why I brought up, that you've been growing at 5% a year for the last five years.
Right.
So, um, when you consider this small commercial, there's been, I'm sure, the, the industrial that you currently have, have done some upgrades as well. Uh, people have been electrifying, they've been putting electric vehicles in. I, I mean, it's a myriad of reasons, but, but you're seeing 5% growth right now, and, and not just 1% for 300 homes.
Okay. Um, I mean, I definitely wanna keep focusing on the future and what we're gonna do to work on this. But it's really hard to, to sit here and hear that you provide the stats of the last, since 1990, we've doubled in, over all this time, admitting that nothing has been changed in the actual infrastructure. But it's not like we don't know that we're growing. So again, it shouldn't be a surprise that we're, we're here. Um, and, yeah, I, I'm very interested to see, oh, so my other question was, the 45 million, is that just for the seven megawatts, just for Canby? And Canby's, the footing the bill just for supplying Canby? That's not being divided by any other communities or anything like? That's just here? Right? Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Braden?
Am I next?
Well, if you choose to be.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. So thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate this because as you can tell, this is, I don't know about the rest of, I don't know about my fellow counselors, but this really weighs heavily on my mind. One of the reasons why I sit up here is I want to make sure that we're providing a good future for the citizens of this community. And powering them is one of the key ways of doing this. Now, I just want to ask for clarification on something here. You had mentioned that over the course of the last five years, we've been growing about 5%. And you had made, you had mentioned that we really should be informing you folks that we are planning for this growth and we're going to be seeing this growth. So that way you can plan accordingly. Is that correct? So really, you're saying that we, as a community, should have been contacting you five to eight years ago to let you know that, hey, we're seeing substantial growth in our community, and we need to have a real hard talk about how we're going to be able to get power to this community for the next essentially 20 years? Is that the understanding that I get from that comment?
Well, I might say that hindsight's always 20/20. And, but you're correct. How do we, how do we look forward now? How do we think about how quickly we can move? Because you're right, you've now, you're hitting the edge.
Okay. So in the process of doing this, one of the things that I think my colleagues will say is I, while I do have a lot on my plate, I do like to do some digging. And one of the things that I had kind of dug into in trying to figure out how this planning has been going on, was this Portland General Electric Company's long-term local transmission plan for the, for the 2020, 2021 planning cycle from December 30th, 2021. Are you familiar with this document?
I, I know of it, but I don't know the detail. But please.
Okay. One of the things that I find interesting is, in here, there's a section called the Willamette Valley Resiliency Project. And in it, it talks about various things that need to be addressed by the year 2027, which is not more than two years away, in an effort to try and prepare the grid for the growth that it is seeing, that it was, that it was, that your systems were seen all the way back in 2020 and 2021. And some of the projects in here is rebuild the 115 kilovolt yard at Bethel Substation, rebuild the Monitor Substation with a 230 kilovolt ring bus, rebuild the North Marion 57 kilovolt substation, rebuild the St. Louis 57 kilovolt substation, rebuild the Wakanda 57 kilovolt station, rebuild the Woodburn 57 kilovolt station, install two new bulk transformers at Marion Substation, rebuild the Chemewa, BPA, Wakanda 57 kilovolt, Monitor, Woodburn, and all those other ones, construct a new Monitor-Wakanda 15 kilovolt line, construct a new Bethel-North Marion 150 volt kilovolt line, and reconfigure the North Marion Sullivan 57 kilovolt line to create a new Monitor-Sullivan 75 kilovolt line. Do you know if any of those projects were completed, or if some of them are still in the process?
Still in the process.
Okay.
And, and again, serving PGE customers, I'll just say, kind of the South Valley, I'm going to refer to it, the Willamette Valley, as you were describing many of those substations, you know, how they fit in. But we were seeing the load increasing to the customers that we serve throughout that area.
Okay. Yeah. And according to the map that's in this document, Canby is in the same kind of like, there's various regions, and we fall into the central transmission sort of region in this, in this map. There's like five or six different regions. What I find interesting is that it shows in your little map here that Canby relies on the Canby Substation, which is a PGE substation, and the Twilight Substation. But yet I see nowhere in any of these documents that these, these substations are mentioned for update. Was that something that was not foreseen, that we would need more power, so therefore these substations might need to be added to that list?
So those, those particular substations that you're talking about, Counselor Padden, are Portland General Electric substations in 2001. I might be getting these dates wrong, but 2001 was when the Westcott Substation was built. And then the second phase of that was 2010. So some of that document that you're seeing might be old literature.
Okay.
There's been upgrades, you know, to the system where we are no longer off the distribution side of the Portland General Electric substations, the Twilight and the Canby substations. Right now, we have Knightsbridge, which is right next door to the Canby Substation, and we have Westcott Substation right next door to the PGE Twilight Substation.
Okay. I guess, I guess for me, and this is, and this is, this is the only, this is the only version of this document I could find. And there could be a newer document out there. And if there is, I really would love for you folks to send it to me and send it to the rest of the council so that we can kind of dig into it. Because the last thing I want to be doing is, is basing my comments and my understanding of the situation on old outdated information. But I guess for me, the part that sort of smacks me in the face about all of this is that you are essentially telling us that we, as a community, should have been warning you five to eight years ago that there was a problem. Yet back in 2020, 2021, it was, it was known that there needs to be significant changes to the grid. And I understand money is tight, COVID happened, and everybody's heads exploded, and like the, the way to get stuff was completely disrupted. But, you know, at the end of the day, I have got to advocate for the people of this community. And the way that we make our money is by generating taxes. And by having a moratorium now on bringing in new businesses. And as Councilman, as Counselor Waterman pointed out, you know, with this possible seven megawatts of power that we have to, or a few megawatts of power that we have to play with, I mean, it could be possible that in two or three years, we could be sitting here and putting a moratorium on building. And then we stop being able to fund the valuable resources that our citizens need, such as paving, making sure that we have our new water treatment plant, you know, basic public, basic public safety. So, well, I really appreciate you folks coming together and working with Canby Utility to, to get this rolling. You know, I think anything that we can do as, I, you know, I will say, as a city counselor, anything that I can do and spur this group on to try and assist you in making sure that this happens faster is, I will do. And I quite frankly wish that I had have known about this. Granted, I've only been on council for three years, but back when I was on council in 2011 and then, I wished I had have known because I probably would have worked with Canby Utility to let you folks know that we plan to grow, because we were even growing back then. So I guess this is a better time than any to let you folks know that we continue, we will plan to continue to grow at a pretty significant rate. And so any way we can plan now to try and remedy the situation, and then plan for the next 20 to 40 years on how we continue to rectify this, to ensure that we have enough power, that letter has officially been sent tonight. So that's what I have to say about that.
Just a quick comment on that. The, the other letter that I would say has already been sent really for, from a Bonneville standpoint, is, is that line and load request. And I think that really is going to drive that letter, like you're talking about as well, where we look at all the possibilities and the growth. So, so we're at a good spot, I think, that it will make a difference from a Bonneville standpoint. I'm sure Larry, S, and PGE.
Well, and again, you know, we don't have insight that 14% growth, the six megawatts is coming until somebody says something. You know, we're not directly managing, we manage the transmission that we have, Bonneville's managing the transmission they have. Utility locally is really focused on the growth that you're talking about. And, and it's got to communicate with all of us. So, so if there's a failing on all of our part, the three of us have not been talking enough. We, we have not been saying, here's what's coming. So even as you talk about the urban growth and going out, that's going to impact us as well. So we need to understand that. And what does that mean going forward? You know, and, and clearly, as you even think about the power that is needed, where do you get that from? Are you going to Bonneville for, you know, the additional? The, well, call is, they refer to as tier one rates, is, has been allocated. So, so anything above that, you're getting at market prices. So where do you want to get that from? And how do you want to do that? So that, that all plays into this as well. And, and it's going to impact, you know, pricing for customers, the existing customers versus new customers. There's a lot there that has to be, you know, thought through. So I just share with you that, yes, we need to have a greater dialogue and much, much faster now to get to resolution here. And, and do you want PGE doing that? Do you want Bonneville doing that? Or do you want to do it yourself? Those are big questions, but you're wanting to see the options put on the table.
Well, and I guess, if I may, I, I think the answer is we cannot do it ourselves because we do not control, we control our little section of the pie. Whereas we rely, we make the pie here in Canby, but the ingredients are coming from Bonneville. And the oven is you folks at PG&E. So without all of you together, all we have is a clump of raw dough and fruit. So clearly, we all need to get in the same kitchen and make this work. But I guess what it comes down to is, and you had mentioned something about, you know, planning within our, in our internal area. And I had a conversation with Jason a few months ago, that essentially our substations were built to hold a tremendous amount more power than they already are, hold, are handling, based on information that, that Canby Utility received from you folks about what the potential amount of power that could be coming into Canby in the future. And those substations were built, I think the Westcott Substation you said was built in 2001, correct?
Yeah. And what you're speaking about is that the transformers that are in the substations are dual voltage transformers. So right now, they're currently running at a 57,000 volt. And they can be easily upgraded to 115,000 when the opportunity arises.
Okay. So to me, it sounds like we have done our part, or Canby Utility has done their part, to make sure that we are prepared for when this more power comes. But clearly, we need to make sure that we're all together on the same page moving forward. And we stay together on that same page until I am old and gray, and my beard is down here, up here at the, at the dais, so that the kids of my kids, which I don't have, which I'm not married, so clearly I'm not going to have kids, but the kids of the mayor's kids will be able to live here and be able to turn the lights on and bake their pies at that point in time.
And, and I think, you know, that, I think the three of us sitting up here, you know, shows that, that unity of moving forward to the, to a good, good point. But at the same time, we're going to need to partner with the city as well for those, those growths. So we can hit the mark when the time comes, you know, to hit those marks. So it's, it's not only the three of us up here, but it will take, obviously, planning, working right alongside us as a partner to be able to hit those goals.
Awesome. And like I said, I can't speak for everybody up here, but I'm there. And I'm ready to fight the good fight to make sure that we get this moving forward. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one follow-up.
Sure.
It's just more of a quest for data. Sorry, my, mine goes into curiosity about the peak load. And, and you probably don't have the, the answer right there, but it might be something that you could give to me, but, or get sent out, is the, is obviously the 66 is, is a peak load. And so my curiosity is, how often is the peak load reached? And how, what is the variance in the, in our power supply? Because it's, because, and this is where my mind's going, is it might be good to try to engineer the peaks as, while we're doing the transmission line to make the, the improvements not as necessary. But I, but that's just kind of a thought that came while I was thinking about it.
You know, Jason, I don't know how, how much you watch it. But, but if I were to just be estimating that, because majority of load is residential, you've got some industrial, you know, I don't know what that breakup is, but you're going to see peaks in the winter, and you're going to see peaks in the summer now. So is that, is that two weeks out of the year, three weeks out of the year?
Once the, the peaks that we see are below the peaks that you're rated at, otherwise we'd be exceeding the peaks and having, you know, blackout situations or something. I'm just thinking out loud, so.
Right. We, we have requirements, and
Yeah.
Canby has requirements that, you know, if you lose an element of the system, you need to be able to have redundancy to pick that up. So, you know, managing that between the three of us, we've got to make sure we meet those standards. But, but you're exactly right, that the peak doesn't happen that often. But when it does, how do we meet that? We've got to make sure that we have the ability to do that during that period.
Yes, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you guys for the presentation tonight. And I'm not going to cover areas that my fellow council members have already covered with you. Good explanation. I can tell you that I'm big into planning, and I'm very disappointed in the lack of planning on the part of PGE and Bonneville. Not soliciting, because I heard you say that you knew there was a 5% growth going on in Canby. And so, you know, as, I'm disappointed that there wasn't planning documents. Obviously, on some of your other documents, there was planning to provide power, it sounds like, to the Woodburn area for the planned growth in Woodburn. Okay. Somewhere along the line, you missed the, you missed the switch in regards to what was going on in Canby, or what was going on, I'm sure you knew what was going on in Hillsborough with Intel and some of those areas as well. So we have a moratorium on in Canby. And that's very serious. We've got a comprehensive plan going on in Canby. And as we can't grow moving forward, we've got an industrial area that is not full yet, that we have some vacant land in, in Canby that we're not going to be able to build on because of the lack of power. And then as we get into the comprehensive plan, we can have a comprehensive plan with new industrial areas, but if we don't have power, nobody can build. And that's a significant impact, not only to the city for taxes, but also to the junior taxing districts as well, in regards to loss of revenue. And you have to have new growth, as you know, in order to stay in business. And with that, we're going to be looking at significant loss of revenue until this issue has been resolved. So I understand, I've heard you say six months for planning? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. About six months for planning? I'm sure our planning director can give you as much information that he has already put together in regards to our future growth areas. But this is very serious. When we put a moratorium on in the city of Canby, we're, we're stopping growth potential already on an industrial area that isn't full yet. So this has to be resolved quickly. And I would expect you three to work together very closely with our planning department so that this can be resolved in a timely manner.
If I can, Mayor, and
Yes, please.
Counselor Davis, I appreciate the comment. I asked today to find out what the growth has been. And going around digging into substation metering, et cetera, that we have to be able to see that. I'm not running the distribution system here. I don't know all the loads here. I can kind of see through the system. But that's where it's really important that we're all working together. So I don't want to, I appreciate pointing finger, but at the same time, you got to point the finger at all three of us. We're all in this together. And we've got to be communicating what is down on the street level so that all of us know where we're going and what it's going to take to, to solve the problem. So, so please, you know, recognize that all of us have the responsibility in here.
Absolutely. I think, yeah, all of us do. And we recognize that, you know, along with needing to partner with the planning department. That's a huge key to this resolution. I want to say something about the study. So the study will not, the study that we were talking about earlier will be to study how we could potentially be direct fed from BPA. The study won't be studying growth within the community or on the PGE line. It'll just, the study is strictly to define how we can be direct fed from BPA. Just wanted to make some clarity on that.
Counselor Padden, and then I'll, I'll wrap this up.
Yeah. And I just wanted to point out, Yeah. And I just wanted to point out, first, again, I appreciate you being here. And I don't want you to think that any of this is directed directly at you. You just you folks happen to be the ones in the hot seat tonight. And now you will go away and hopefully go down to the folks that actually pull the levers and the wires and say, holy cow, we need to get some stuff cracking over here, because some stuff needs to happen. Counselor Davis, to your point, I will just let you know, and I'm happy to send a link to this document to everybody on the council. But this this plan here is not just the Willamette Valley Resiliency Project is one of 12 projects that were identified by the study in 2000 and 2001 for a 10 year project list. It includes the Southeast Portland Conversion Project, the Sunset Bus Reconfiguration Project, Pearl BPA Sherwood Capacity Upgrade Project, Hillsborough Reliability Project, the Willamette Valley Resiliency Project, Mary Hill Sherwood Number One and Number Two 230 kilovolt reconductor project, Beaverton Techtronics and Mary Hill Reedville 115 kilovolt reconductor project, Horizon Keeler BPA Number One 230 kilovolt reconductor project, the Dayton Reliability Project, the Evergreen Harberton 230 kilovolt reconductor project, Evergreen Third Bulk Power Transfer Project, and the Evergreen Sherwood 230 kilovolt line project. So all of these things skirt all around our community. And while we are not directly named in any of these because of our size, I would have assumed that we would directly benefit or indirectly benefit from any of these projects occurring. But it is possible that I have a misunderstanding of how all that works.
So those are like Mike was referring to, he's got $5 billion worth of transmission work that he's doing. We have about $3 billion that we're doing. And yes, we're focused on our customers and and doing what we need to do for our customers. Now, if you as a customer of Bonneville, and Bonneville wants us to do that, then we focus attention there as well. So that's why you don't see it in that particular document. Those are the areas that we serve. So you wouldn't see the attachment to McMinnville, for instance, or you wouldn't see it to Forest Grove. Because again, much like yourselves, being a municipality operating in itself. So it has to operate as a municipality and come forward and ask for that. So that's that's the difference.
Okay.
I think I think you understand the passion, obviously, that we have about this. And
We appreciate that. Thank you.
No, no, absolutely. And I'm and again, the three of you working together over the last couple of months has been very beneficial. I think we've gotten some really good progress made and some solutions going on. And to your point, we're not a customer of PGE. We are our own entity that works with Bonneville Power, and we just use PGE transmission lines. So it's it's that's the customer relationship that's there. And so I do appreciate PG jumping in also to understand the situation and figure out how best we can learn from where we were and where we need to go and how do we get there in a way that is going to be beneficial for not just Camby, but obviously, you know, your gentlemen's entities as well. Because there's a lot, as Counselor Patton just listed off, just for the service area, the service pieces that PGE has, there's a tremendous amount of projects. And I'm sure Bonneville Power has the exact same cadre of projects that they're working on on a level that they're trying to handle. And so with these moving pieces and whatnot, we just want to try to solve what what we can here. We don't want to stunt our growth. We don't want to stop our growth. And we know that it takes more than just Campy Utility to make that happen. And so, again, appreciate the three of you coming together to work on this and come tonight for you guys on a Wednesday night to give us the lowdown. There's a lot that we one of the things I think it's always been hard, and a lot of people don't understand is elected officials and city councillors and mayors is we're knowledgeable on everything and experts on nothing. And so this is an area that it's been a crash course. And I think I've moved down to my first knuckle on my pinky finger of understanding of what goes into the the power system, thanks to, you know, you, sir, appreciate that and just talking with, I guess, former Mayor Melody Thompson there in her role. But there's a lot there that goes into it. So we know we've got work to do. We are here to help. You know, I think we're you've heard our consternation. We're done with that. It's time to move forward. And we will do what we can to help because we don't want to turn off the development piece for Camby. So please let me know how I can help in any way. I'll gladly, you know, beat whatever drum that I need to beat to make it happen. So, yeah. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Really, you appreciate it tonight.
Thank you.
Item seven on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions, and we have none. I don't think we have any old business, correct? Randy? We don't have any old business on the agenda?
That is correct, Mayor. No old business.
Well, then let's jump to new business.
Okay.
Nine A, council goals and work session discussion topics.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll see in your agenda packet, did include a section on your 2025-27 goals, your five goal areas. But it did come up at the last council meeting that on off Wednesday council nights, how are we going to finish out this calendar year, perhaps with the more aggressive rigor and cadence around work session discussion topics? We've had a number of areas come up in the last 12 weeks that might want to delve a little deeper into. And so I've been compiling my own list, listing to those examples. But as I was making that list, I just referred back to the 2025-27 goals that the council had already set, and a number of those bullets were captured. So that's for your edification. You've got your council goals. I don't know if you typically have like a midyear or a year end look back at the goals and see how you're tracking on those. That could be something we could calendar. But specifically, if you'll note, the shortlist that I put together for work session discussion topics, there's been a lot of discussion around that can be adult center and next steps ideating around that. The can be area transit headquarters options. I know Todd's working really hard on that, has some federal grant funding options he's about to pursue pursue. Our budget forecasting, I just got done listening in on your budget meetings from earlier this year, and your ask for a five year, five to seven year forecast, looking at revenue options and trends. So you so I think that's something that I've been hearing loud and clear from the majority of you to pick up on. We're in the middle of recruiting a new finance director. So that'll help bring that forward. The mayor and I did just meet, as you learned, with the school board chair and superintendent. So further exploring in a work session environment, what partnerships you'd be looking to delve into with the school district. I understand that there's some charter amendments that you may have talked about as a council previously. There's discussion about forming budgetarily, forming more of a can be parks and rec fund or department, if you will. We have a parks maintenance fee that's allocated in the general fund right now that could go direct into that. So I need to explore that with you all because we have an ordinance where that those monies are received. And that ordinance dictates how those monies are received in the general fund. So there's the Parks Committee has been having some discussions as late as last night on that topic. Our planning directors here, our planning staff, continuously talking with the council about and the planning commission about planning code updates. I've heard from some councillors about that one. Shelter options in Camby for extreme weather. Street maintenance fee, that's coming back to council. So I don't know that we need a work session on that. That's going to be a business item, most likely. System development charges, working with Don and Ryan on updating those, all five of those that are allowed by law. So thought I'd just put those out there as teasers. I know that we've talked about maybe a sidewalk program. We've talked about code compliance versus code enforcement, having a report on a work session on that. So with that, just kind of whet the appetite. I know there's others that I no doubt missed. But you know, we've got two and a half months, three months left. How do we want to finish out the year? And what would rise to the top for a mayor and council that you would like to see more emphasis on as we close out 2025?
Mr. Really, thank you for that. I think, too, the crux of the conversation, and I've kind of been getting from some of the council members as well, is being able to to convene just maybe on these as like, one at a time kind of items. Again, years past, our council meetings started at 7:30. We would do would do work sessions on a topic quite frequently. And that would usually run us from 6:00 to almost 7:20, where we had time, you know, to hash out something that might be coming up on a future agenda. With the move to the council meetings now being at 7:00, you know, doing a work session that starts at 6:00 cramps that time dramatically to be able to vet a lot of things. And so, you know, is that, I mean, starting even earlier, is that meeting on our off Wednesdays? Because as you know, Randy's just shown and read off the list, and you see in your packet, there's a lot. There's always been a lot. And for us to be able to batter around ideas, as Counselor Sterns has mentioned, or even get deeper into a project or just anything material wise, to be able to then go back to staff and say, hey, I need something more, or I need this, before it hits an agenda where we're maybe scrambling for getting having enough information to make a sound decision. So I think the ask is like, what what are the council's thoughts on going to a, you know, a third Wednesday evening from to do, you know, a teed up topic to bat around as a council? Or do we go earlier on a work session time? So Counselor Malanato?
I wouldn't be opposed to doing the third Wednesday or another day that we can do. Unfortunately, making our day longer is just it's not an option for me.
When you say make it longer, like starting sooner?
Yeah, try to do it in the same day as our regular meetings is just it's not feasible.
No, I agree. I mean, I guess we could adjust the start time of the council meetings. We've done that before. But again, Council President Hensley?
Thank you. When I first was on council, our urban renewal meetings, we had them more often. So that was the third or was the second Wednesday of the month, I think it was.
Yeah.
And it was dedicated to that versus trying to do them in the same night. If we had a small topic that, you know, if Randy felt we could hammer something out in 30, 40 minutes time, I don't mind doing it ahead of the meeting. But lately, our work sessions, we've had robust conversations, and they make us either have to abruptly quit and then go into a second meeting to talk about the same topic, or we start our council meeting late. We're here till midnight. So I would prefer that we park these work sessions on a different Wednesday as well. And so we can also maybe not have to start so early. Because I know, I mean, I'm right here in town. Jason's either here in town, or he's on the road and zooming in. But you come from the west side, you come from the west side. It's hard to get here for a 6 o'clock meeting sometimes with the traffic. So I think that for our sanity and efficiency, we should do it on a different Wednesday.
Other thoughts?
I completely agree with Counselor Hensley and Counselor Malanato. One of the things which is nobody's really fault, but it kind of annoys me is when the conversation has to get cut off because something else has to start. And I would love to have on days where we stop because we're just dang tired of the subject.
Or we're just done with it. Yeah.
You guys are, I mean, to be rather blunt, some of you are wusses. You haven't been here when we've been till like 1:00 in the morning.
True.
What time do you get up for work?
Six.
I'm up at 5:00.
I'm up at 5:15.
Another Wednesday works for me.
So if we did like a first, second, third Wednesday of the month, and left the fourth one as a non, you know, just a free night, because like I think we were looking at the calendar, I think, like example, was it is it is October a five week month?
Yeah.
Oh, we get two Wednesdays on.
Yeah, that's what I mean. There's that that occasionally happens. Are we picking up something? Hello? Is there another mic?
Gordon, are you doing something back there?
I apologize. That was me. I meant to turn my camera on and accidentally.
Oh.
Hi, Emily.
Emily's not there, but she is there. There she is.
So there's the right way the buttons work. And I'll put myself back on mute now. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I don't know if it matters, but the table mic is on, I see.
It's always on.
It's always on.
Oh, okay.
It's permanent on.
Okay.
So so it seems like that so maybe here in October, we can tee up a cup. So Randy and I'll look at
Okay.
Start laying out, you know, some low hanging fruit that's been out there that we just need to get
Hammer them out.
Taken care of and some direction on to quickly get them into an agenda item to where we can start pulling irons out of the fire and putting them out.
That sounds great.
As we add more here, as we grow and be
Sounds good.
A fun city in that regards. So, okay, you know, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
No, I guess so. Play with nice with me microphone. Thank you. So as far as like prioritization of this, just in looking at this list, I think for me, the top three that we really should, in my opinion, we should be tackling is the budget forecasting new revenue. I mean, clearly, you know, new revenue is going to be a big deal now that we are moving into this moratorium. And we have ident we've identified for several years now that, you know, there's a desperate need for us to for do some comprehensive forecasting
Yeah.
For the city, so that we can sort of stage these projects, so that we don't end up spending the money without real all the money that we have without realizing it. So to me, that's like number one. Number two would be the SDCs. Again, that is a that is a revenue generating aspect of things. And then something that we've been talking about since, like, I was on council back in the in 2009 or whatever, is charter amendments, you know, I know that there's a lot that needs to be done there. And we have budgeted for some charter amendments to be on an upcoming election. And so maybe instead of tackling it all in one shot, we at least get some of the the more mission critical ones put on there and dealt with and then schedule and then come up with an idea of funding and scheduling for getting some of the more fine tuned ones done. Like either say, this is, these are all the little like grammatical changes or update changes that we need to make that are pretty non controversial and can be passed as raft. And then here's one or two that we want to do separately. So that way, if one fails, they don't all fail sort of thing. And then when it comes to like the adult center building, I don't know, like, to me, I think that's a I just want it raised. So I think that could be a quick that could be a quick one. And then, you know, some of these other ones, like the transportation HQ, I don't see us really being able to dig into that until Dodd has done his work and all that. So as far as like things to kick off for this year, those those three would be the big ones. And then continue work with the street maintenance fee and the park maintenance fee. I think that once those get back on track, there might be, you know, they might be easily attainable because those are kind of in what I would consider a subcommittee. So that just looking at this list, the can be school district one, I think that's one that can be dealt with in the future. The planning code updates, we got to wait till the comprehensive plan is done. And we're still another year out of that, right?
Burning the code out, eh, actually, next year.
Next year, yes. But we took out of the budget, we only put in the budget to be able to do a little portion of it, but not the whole.
We're seeking another grant from BLCD, which hopefully will match that in what we need to be on for the first year.
Okay, so that's something that, you know, can be on a bubble to pop up when and, you know, so those are all little things that can kind of be puzzled in there. But yeah, I think I think for me, the budget forecast and new But yeah, I think, I think for me, the budget forecast and new revenue, the SDCs and the charter amendments are the three that I would like to see tackled at the top of the priority list.
Yes, Counsel Davis?
Thank you. I think one of our first meeting should be to prioritize the list, because we're only hearing one person's comments tonight, and there's more people up here that we need to prioritize that list.
I'll get a meeting scheduled.
Yes, Counsel Waterman.
So a few months ago, before we, before our changes with administration, we have, we already had a prioritized list in every, and when we got these reports, there was a sort of a table of each of the things that, of the goals. And the first like how much they've been done, when we expect them to be done, and notes. So that already exists.
Really?
So if we can get that reincorporated back into their notes, that would probably be helpful, because we at least know where we left off on those in the prioritization that we don't, we don't want to redo the work that we've already done.
Exactly.
Good point. Thank you for remembering that. All right. We will organize accordingly. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to throw my hat in towards fiscal projections, when you really need to do that.
Okay.
And, and the, and also the, yeah, just to do fiscal projections, put that on the top of the list, let that float to the top.
All right. Randy and I will work on that post haste.
Sounds good, Mayor. Thank you.
One, one quick thing, I know, please, may I? Just real quick.
Counsel Patton.
And this is maybe, Emily, a question for you, for the, to expedite things, for the prioritize, prioritization of things. Is, could it be possible to do like a doodle poll of the council that says, you know, on X date, the council is going to get a doodle, like a public meeting recognition, or however it is, where on X date, the council is going to get this doodle poll via email, and they're going to prioritize these things, and on X date, it will be published for the community to see what those results are. So that way, some of that initial prioritization can be done in advance, rather than trying to, you know, cast our chips during the middle of a meeting and then spend all that time doing that.
Yeah, excuse me. A year ago, I would have said that concerns purely factual matters, and that would have been fine to have outside of a properly noticed public meeting. OGECS interpretations of late have been a little concerning in that regard, so give me a minute to look at that, and then I'll connect back with Randy on whether that's feasible. That would be a nice way to streamline things, though.
A doodle poll.
Or some sort of poll.
Okay.
All right. Moving into mayor's business, the only thing I really to report on is the last Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting, the group decided on and finalized its work plan for 2025, '26, which really, again, continues to be around transportation, housing, and land use, and some other areas that kind of feed into all three of those. So that's really the only thing to report from Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, and that's all that I really have for this week. Everything else can wait. We'll move into Counsel comments and liaison reports. Counsel Patton?
I don't have anything, because I was mostly checked out for, since our last meeting, on vacation. So I've been living in a hole in the ground. Goodbye.
Counsel Maldonado?
Nothing to report, however, I would like to just state, Sunday's visual was absolutely amazing. If you didn't get a chance to go to that, find the video on Facebook. It was absolutely beautiful and amazing. A lot of people came together, not for just their beliefs, but for the love of one another. And it was extremely heartwarming, and I wanted to say, I'm proud of my wife. She gave herself to the Lord, and it absolutely blew me up.
Awesome. Counsel President Hensley?
He just got me, I'm sorry.
Want me to come back?
No, I was, I was there Sunday too, but yeah, I was all my feels about it. I don't have any liaison report necessarily for liaison assignments, but I did want to thank the Cambie Fire District for once again putting on a very lovely ceremony for the 9/11 remembrance. And as I always go to that, and it's, it's beautiful every time, so I wanted to thank them for once again putting that together. And my age old tradition, it is September 17th, it is Constitution Day. So I have brought some constitutions, they're on the back podium, and I gave one to my fellow counselors who weren't here last year, and also to Randy. And did you have one from last year? Okay. So anyway, Constitution Day.
I did not.
You've got one?
You did not.
There you go. Now you have one. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just before moving on to Counsel Davis, yeah, so the 9/11 remembrance piece, so next year will be the 25th anniversary, and it will be actually out at Cambie PD next year. So just well advanced notice that the location is changing for the 25th, but just wanted to put that out there. So it was a really great event, is a great, well put together, but always solemn gathering for sure.
For sure.
Chief, or chief. Geez, Counselor Davis?
Counsel Chief.
Retired Chief.
So the, the Cambie Adult Center Board Meeting went very well. They've received their permits, or at least results, or have heard that the actual requirements for their permits are fairly minor in general for their new location, which is good news to them. So their next step is to review those and hire a general contractor to start developing plans for the remodel of the facility that they're in. So that's good news, and more to come in regards to the actual date that they'll start construction of that facility. So that's, that's good news. Park and Rec was a busy meeting in, last night. The Auburn Farms has started construction, and they hope to have that done by April of next year. So they're moving right along with that, with the Auburn Farms. While we're on that, they are soliciting through the naming, remember, we approved a naming of the parks. So they're have applications out there where people can submit names for the new park. The president or the chairperson for the committee, Mr. Johnson, has received five to this point, but he wants to keep that open, and they'll revisit that at their next meeting. The big one is, I gave you all a copy of a request that has been made for Bridging Cultures in regards to property that is in the Feist addition, right down from the mayor's house, in regards to down on Teakwood, next to Trost Elementary, is that little piece of property. And they are going to be submitting for a grant in order to develop that property. But what they want to do is put on there, like fruit trees, different type of, you know, asparagus plants, very similar, very similar to what they're doing next to Baker Prairie through Bridging Cultures. It would remain a city park, it would still remain city property, and, but they, through the grant, would develop this property and add the vegetation. The reason I bring it to you tonight is just to, maybe nods of heads that council's in favor of moving or approving that in the future. We'll let the city administrator work through what we have to do to actually approve that, but just more or less that everybody, nobody has any heartburn with the development of that for Bridging Cultures, because the push is for them to be able to submit this grant in October, by October 16th. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, and head nods here.
Can I just take clarification on this? This isn't just vegetation, this is actually open to the public to be able to consume the food that is actually grown on this property.
Yeah, that's correct.
In general, so it's not, it's not just like to look at, it's actually for the community to actually utilize. So, but yes, I'm a yes, head nod that I would consent to the consensus for this.
My curiosity on this, which is something maybe needs to be looked into, would be if somebody were to get like food poisoning from eating fruit grown on that, was the city going to be liable? Just inquiring minds want to know.
Right there. Okay.
I imagine that's a possibility, but right now, one next to Baker Prairie too, that people can go in there and they're just taking food from there anyway.
This already exists in the city.
Yeah, but that's school district, that would get sued, right? I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah.
Inquiring minds.
Yeah, I guess for me, I'm, I'm happy to see these sort of things. I'm, as a plant person, I'm always encouraging this sort of thing. Again, as long as it, there's no, you know, dependent on the liability, as long as we can sort of save ourselves from the liability of things, if there is any, and then also to make sure just that maintenance, you know, obviously, maintenance is a thing. So these things can be done in a way that they kind of maintain themselves, sort of, but as long as it's not putting any extra constraints on the parks folks.
Right.
I'm totally fine with it.
Okay, thank you. So Randy, that's kind of feedback, so that we can move forward with whatever we have to do with that.
Good.
Yep, we're good, we're good land use wise, so we'll move forward, and I'll, I'll talk to the group that made the presentation. Okay, and just as an awareness piece, they had a discussion about the possibility of putting in a kiosk at community park for actually, they're looking at charging for parking at community park, but then it was, should we do this just during the busy time when community park is full during the summertime? And that, those funds would be used to kick back to the maintenance of the bathrooms and toilet paper and the actual use of that park. Plus, it would control it a little bit more as well, because public safety, police and fire still continue to have problems getting down there. By putting in a kiosk or parking, then once it's full, it's full. And so there, I just wanted to bring it to your awareness that they could, most likely will be making a recommendation to council to consider putting in a kiosk and using that revenue for the maintenance of that park.
I have a question, if I could. Thank you. Just for your knowledge, something similar came up in the past about user fees for the parks, and I was told that that couldn't happen because of insurance liability would change. So I don't know if parking fees would qualify as the same category, but it would be a fair question to ask.
Yeah, I know that they used examples of Silverton, City of Silverton puts kiosks in for parking, Oregon City, of course, charges for everything.
For everything, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that would, I don't know if parking changes the liability. So it's just a fair question to ask, that's all.
Counselor Davis, have they thought about, instead of a kiosk, some sort of permitting that they have to do per year for parking in a city park, or something, something along that lines? One, the cost of kiosk costs them another employee, and then that way, all we would have to do is have a, the lot leased at that point, either by tow company or city employee that's already in that field and position. I'm thinking something along that lines might be a bit more feasible than, or a bit more accurate as well.
Yeah, well, I'll can take that back to him and kick it around. And then as far as Maple Street goes, Maple Street Park, the big issue there was putting up some signage. A lot of people don't know about that secondary parking that they have at, and so Barry was going to be getting with Jerry and some other people in regards to looking at where can they put up a better sign indicating where to go to park, and how to educate the people on that secondary parking area over by the kiddies play toys. And then additional parking, again, they're looking at what's going to be available that they can use out of the park, in the park fees, to be able to build that in the future. So that's still on their radar. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel starts.
Well, I went to the Cambie Utility Board Meeting, but I think we've heard a lot from them tonight. So I don't know that there's anything extra from that meeting that I need to add on to that. Just one thing that came up during the meeting is this request for a fee waiver, this, this, not this morning, but earlier in the meeting, I would like to see, while you're contemplating that, not just a yes, waive the fee or no, not, but maybe a way of maybe stick, just sticking it as a lien on the property for people who can't afford it, which means that the city wouldn't be out any money in the long term, and that somebody who didn't have the money to do it could, could do it that way. And we wouldn't have to be, citizens wouldn't be subject to what kind of mood I'm in when they make the request, whether I grant it or not. And that's one of the things that kind of bothered me about that, if there's a procedure in place that says, low income or not enough money, throw it as a lien, city gets, city gets the money eventually, and they might want to refinance it early, or refinance, finances ourselves, but that's just a thought, I don't want to just be, grant the fee or waive the fee, because I think that makes it sort of awkward on our part, because we have to go, how sincere are they? Or, you know, you know, that kind of judgment's which hard to make.
So creative financing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I can say.
All right.
I can talk more if you want. Let Counsel Waterman go.
I'm going to go to Counsel Waterman, I'll come back to you, sir. Counsel Waterman?
The Bike and Pet Committee, we had a little briefing today. Last meeting was primarily, you know, more talking about courtesy and usage of warnings on passing on your left, and mitigating issues of safety by educating and, you know, striping and road signage and so forth. For the library board meeting, for the library, the Career Center is now open, that is funded by a grant, that have certain requirements. There are workshops, one-on-one assistance will be coming soon. The computer can be reserved, and there's free printing for resumes, et cetera, if needed. They've received a $10,000 donation from Cambie Kiwanis for the Baker Labs theme programming. From the beginning of the year until September, if the amount of materials that were rented from the library were purchased, it's saved the community $1.8 million. So the funding that the library gets, it does save the community a lot of money. The district task force is still convening, they're working on the, they call it the recommendations for the task force. We just kind of talked about that not too long ago, they just had the, the public virtual meetings to get feedback from the community and then start their analysis. I have some questions later on some of the staff reports, so I'll just wait until we get to that.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel Davis would like to go back?
Yes, I apologize, but I do would like to thank Randy for attending the Park and Rec meeting last night. One of the subjects that they discussed, obviously, was the park maintenance fee. The chair of the committee has a lot of energy on the park maintenance, rightfully so, it needs to be addressed. But we also need to look at the ordinance itself, so maybe we can put that on the project list, because that ordinance has to be updated. And Randy can probably talk about that under his report.
Okay. Great. Any other updates of any kind? All right. Item 12, city administrator business and staff reports. Mr. Really?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. It's nine o'clock, and I'm standing between you and executive session, so just doing a temperature check here, because I do, we do have staff reports, so.
Which, by the way, that clock is wrong.
Oh, is it?
It's actually, it says 9:30.
Oh, geez.
It says 9:04. And it is 9:04.
No, but this computer says 9:30. That says 9:04.
Oh, okay. You pointed at that one, so that one was wrong.
Oh, yeah, the computer.
Wrong, or is this one wrong?
The screen, this one down here is wrong.
It's 9:04.
Anyway. Anyways, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Let's press forward, please.
All right, first point of clarification. We heard a lot about Canby's growing at 5% tonight. So I went down and had a sidebar with our amazing planning staff. 5% load, okay, so that was an energy conversation. About 1% population per year. So just making sure, I see a lot of nodding heads. So I was the last one that caught on to that.
Thank you.
So great, thank you. We do have our, in your packet, our bi-monthly reports. Let me know if you have any particular questions. I will say that thanks to the Bike and Ped Committee, I think we're going to have to address striping of that path sooner or later. It's starting to become more, it's coming up more and more. The e-bikes going faster, education, proactively talking about it. Emma on Don's staff came to me this afternoon, had some ideas about working with Canby Herald, just like you heard tonight, so more and more on that. I know that we have some opinions about that, we'll need probably some legal counsel on that too. But, you know, there's signage and striping and I've talked to Public Works about it as well. So just putting that on your radar. In terms of bi-monthly reports, let me know if you have any particular questions. First off is vacancies. You've got two vacancies for Bike and Ped, but two have been received.
We're waiting to set up the interviews.
Okay, interview's coming. Same for budget and urban renewal, so those interviews are coming, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Where they're locked and ready to go, right?
Yes, we have three applicants.
Okay, three?
Yep, and they're.
For two spots.
Nag is the mayor.
We have, that's okay, you're a busy man. Heritage and Landmark Commission, two vacancies there and the, and one vacancy on the Transit Advisory Committee. So you guys all saw that in your report, so spread the word. We're looking for good folks. Just moving through, a couple of highlights. You got an HR report this time, that's different. So I had Mr. Wood do an HR report, gives you some, we're starting open enrollment next month for medical health insurance for employees. The next one is our court report. So busy, couple of months in court, 26 new cases being filed with the court per month. Okay, so that's a data point. Jamie's report was all about the activity, Canby days. Maya, Finance had their report, it was just really one month's worth of reporting, but they did submit our final budget from last fiscal year to the county. You saw the Fleet report. Really interesting numbers if you looked at Marissa Ely's library report and the teen, the children, teen and adult section. It's pretty interesting, last couple of years, the events for children in 2022, 23 at our library is 102. This past year is 251. That's almost three times. For teens, it went from 25 to 61 events. And adults, programming went from 28 to 117. And Marissa didn't know I was going to say any of that, I just picked it out of the report, so anyway. And then you saw a comment about how many homes were in Don's report that are being built in Canby the past couple of years. You saw the Chief Trow report. Driving under the influence of intoxication is up, past couple of months. 17 last month, versus 14 the month before. Traffic citations, 382 in Canby in the month of August. Yes, out there making our roads safe. And then Parks and Rec, I mean, Public Works, shout out to Marissa, Maria Toledo, who likes to take nice pictures and submit them for your review of all the work that the crews are doing out there at the different job sites. So with that, you know, lastly, the swim center. Look at that, morning public swim lessons for 2025, 2,000 morning public swimming lessons, 2,000. And then evening lessons, almost another 2,000. So lots of swimming lessons going on in Canby for the year. I thought that was worth a high five.
Counselor Waterman, you should give a couple of questions about the reports.
Yeah, for the downtown parking district master plan?
Yeah.
So a good recap of what we've done. The action item is, we'll continue to work on it. So is there, is there a timeline? Is there a sort of like a, like this is the next step? Or here's the next five steps and when we think we're going to actually do those? Because I know there's a committee that probably is wanting to get together to start discussing this within the community, et cetera, that a parking committee is part of the plan.
Was that in Jamie's?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just.
I mean, I'm guessing there probably isn't right at the moment because it's not on here, but I just make sure that that stays on top of it.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Yeah, we had Rick come in and give us a report a couple of months ago on our downtown parking strategy, so maybe we need to take the next step. That's what you're asking. So I'll get with Jamie tomorrow.
Okay. And then one thing that I was curious about on the Canby Business Connection, it talks about a collaboration between Economic Development, Canby Advantage and the Canby Business Connection. What's the Canby Business Connection?
I don't know, it was monthly.
Is it, is it, is it, is that the actual publication from Canby Advantage? Or is it a separate entity? Like, it's a way it's worded is a little confusing because it sounds like it's another organization or entity that's collaborating.
I think there's two different magazines.
I think there's two magazines that come in my mailbox, but I don't remember what they're called.
Okay.
Canby Advantage is one of them, but the other one, I'm thinking it might be that name, but.
I was just curious what that was because it's not ringing a bell.
I think Jamie's watching, so.
Okay, great.
Well, we'll follow up on this tomorrow.
The Historical Society, talking about the website, they're talking about, do us updates to the website. Talks about members of the historical committee, city staff and the city's web development team. Who's the web development team?
I think it's a one person.
Isn't it Jamie?
It's just Jamie.
Okay, so it's city staff. It's not, I didn't know if we had like a third party that we were.
No, she's communicating.
Okay, so that's who. On payroll, it was looking at the things, it was kind of interesting. I don't know if, because it's bi-monthly, is it seasonal? But payroll fluctuates between 100 payrolls submitted between like two months and then it's like 400 and then 300, then 400, like, how are we having so many variations in our?
Time sheets?
Time sheets, yeah.
So I'm like 4:30 in July, August to 501 in September, October?
Yeah.
Yeah, good question. We don't have that many different employees.
Right.
Okay.
Seasonals, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, so I was curious. Maybe even, I don't think we hire 100 seasonals either, so.
No.
And then in utility billing, it's twice a year, there's an extra $500 being sent, being billed. Is that, is there a, I'm not sure why in the report, why we would see an extra $500 almost like every six months of what that's for.
Utility bills, which line item?
I don't have the actual line item on.
Cash?
I can get that for you.
Is it?
You're talking about utility bill sent? The dollar?
I think it was the dollar. I'd have to go back and look at that.
That's okay.
So I apologize.
I'm, I see what section you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's about $500 difference?
Yeah, there's about, about 500 extras. I think it was five extra 500 cent, actually. Like there was addition, there was like an additional.
Yes, I'm with you, I see where you're at.
Okay, you see it on there?
It's 500 cent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Good questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Ely, update on the finance director search?
Yeah, making good progress. We have, next Tuesday, we're bringing in two finalists. Have a nice panel. Canby Utilities Finance Director is participating.
Good.
It's nice of him to join us. Members of the department head team, Don's participating because he has a lot of, you know, financial questions of the finance department, obviously. So it's good to have his brain in there. Appreciate that, Don. But these two candidates both have public sector financial background, so. And we will confer after the interview on Tuesday. Tuesday evening with the committee and see if we have a number one candidate that comes out of that.
Great, it's exciting to hear.
Yeah, yeah, I think we had about 1,500 clicks on, of interest when we posted it.
How many, how many resumes did we get ultimately?
I think Pete put that, if I'm not, let me check.
20?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
That's exactly what.
He did this in the back of the room.
He was giving us finger, not left finger.
He wasn't giving us left finger.
Thank you for your report, Pete. 20.
Great, Counselor Pat, you got a question?
No, I was just going to throw out, I think there might be, we need to look into these because this thing does not apparently, was not feeding the computers. So I don't know if someone could look into those to see that they're working. Well, then, okay, that would solve it.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Next, item 13, citizen input. Citizens, citizens, nothing, okay. All right, action review.
You approved the consent agenda and you, there was also a consensus to add off Wednesdays for work sessions with priority of topics to come later.
Great.
Two hours later.
Two hours and two things done, sweet. All right, we are not adjourning. City council will have an executive session here this evening, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I am going to enter into executive session under the following statutes. ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent A to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member or other, or individual agent. And also ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of a chief executive officer, of any public body, public officer, employee or staff member who does not request an open hearing.
Great, thank you for that. Is there a second? Thank you. Motion's been made by Counsel President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Sterns to move into executive session. The executive session will be held pursuant to the following statutes. ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent F. ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent A. ORS 192.660 parent 2, parent I. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, city, we only represent the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Not seeing any news media here this evening. No decision will be made in the executive session. We will be coming back after executive session to make decision and then adjourn the meeting. Any further questions? Okay, Canby, thank you. We will be back at some point here in the near future if you want to stay tuned in.
We're going upstairs, we're reconvening down here, though?
Yes. Yes.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome back to the City Council meeting. We've just finished up our executive session. And so through the executive session, the council's come to consensus to have HR Director and Councilor Davis, along with our attorney, Emily Gaimond, to negotiate or negotiate the extension of our interim city administrator's contract until June 30th, the end of our fiscal year, with the potential of extending beyond that time period if need be. And so again, just